So I'd like to call the meeting to order. And that's it, because we need to prepare the council to meet us in education.
I'm gonna do that. That is great. Emily Parker, once again this day, we are thankful to you, Lord, thankful to you, God, for happiness and readiness and guidance and help us, Lord, to be wise enough to follow your lead and to take care of the town business in a way that is best for everybody concerned, God. And again, God, we appreciate your help in that, and I thank you, God, for all that you do for this place. And we do give you the thanks that I hope that we should in due respect. Amen.
Thank you, sir. That's all standing, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Have before us some minutes of the previous meeting, like to entertain a motion to accept this presented or to make changes as needed.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, I was in favor of accepting the minutes as presented. Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And then the minutes are approved. I appreciate you all taking the bet. All right, now, we're going into citizens' time here. I'd like to have, appreciate you all coming, and like to put out a request for everybody. If anybody wants to speak, to come and introduce yourself. We'd like to get Derek to watch the time. We'd like to keep the time at about three minutes. If you need more, you're gonna ask for it. I mean, we're not gonna be surmising if you can't do that. So with that said, when you step forward, the first one of you, do you want me to call or you want? If one of you want, well, come on ahead, ladies first. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. And my name is Marcy Zahn. I live at 415 North Main Street. There's a two-story white house across from Harpo's Hardware. And like I've said before, I'm fairly new here, three years now, but, and I know, you already know about this, but I'm sad to see this business that has opened up rolling retreat. That is, I know there's nothing that can be done. I guess they got the business license. It's concerning. I've had some ladies approach me and said, "I can't make the meeting tonight." Some of their questions are that it's, they measured it, .6 miles, which is 3,000 feet from the entrance of the elementary school. They're just concerned, kids, just looking at that, I know they can't see the sign from the road, but just kids being exposed to that and just the traffic that it'll bring in. They had questions on who regulates these types of shops and this, this business, they advertise on Facebook that they do drive-through services. And I know last year for a fact, there was been a problem with what they call weed pins, and that was a problem at the high school. So I hope that this business will definitely not sell to the students going to the high school and make it easier and more accessible to them, that they will be parted going in there, and they have to be 21 or older, and I hope that this business will abide by the rules. I'm gonna be watching. If not, Eric's gonna be really busy. It's gonna put more pressure on him to monitor. But one of my friends, she just wanted to know who approved this business to move in, and that was her question.
I guess, I guess to answer your question, nobody really approved it. I just could not disapprove it.
Right.
To answer your question, I mean, they're, they're opening up all over the state of Virginia with the new rules pertaining to these types of establishments. They are, they're regulated by the government and I mean...
And they make the business breaks my heart, too, because it's, I think that's distasteful to the town and to the look, to the image that this town wants to portray. That's not, and I know there's, you know, there's nothing that can be done, but I just don't think that this is a good image for a world retreat. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to just say a couple things about what you said.
Okay.
The procedures that they go through to get into these, to get into these establishments are pretty stringent. The problem is, just like alcohol, tobacco, and anything else, it's not them selling to kids that's the issue. It's them selling to somebody that can legally buy it, and then them selling it to the kids is the issue. So, I mean, I'm not gonna try to compare it to alcohol, but it's somewhat similar in the fact that if teenagers can get their hands on it, they're gonna get their hands on it one way or another, but I don't think it'll be a direct sale type of deal that you were concerned about. So, I mean, they're, they're pretty strict on, on what happens in these, I mean, you can't go, you can't even go in the door unless you're 21 years old. But I know that probably doesn't alleviate any of your concern, but I just wanted to let you, give you some, you know, some information about it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can we, look, I mean, is there any other ones that dispense through a drive-through? Is that normal? Because I know with alcohol, you cannot do that. And I, I can, I know that's different for this kind of...
I think you're such a gray area on this now. I mean, I don't even know if it's legal, but I mean, they're from here, they're everywhere.
Right.
I, I knew this was, heard the cop window coming, and this will help you. I called at least three jurisdictions that haven't, and I say you not have a minute's trouble idea yet.
On their Facebook page, they just advertise convenient, easy, friendly service, drive-through service.
That's my question again. I know it's all kind of...
It's still a bit of a, thank you for taking your time.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
You knew when you came in, I liked your attitude. We're not gonna be stupid enough to say, "Oh, we're gonna stomp that out."
Right.
Sorry, that's not what's gonna happen.
I know.
And it's still against federal law. See, the law, that law never been changed. Huh? Nobody, I don't know, I don't know anybody, aside Sean, because I don't know him.
That's right.
It's against federal law.
Yeah.
He said, "What about Colorado?" I said, "You have to talk to Colorado, California now, you'll have to talk to Virginia." It is illegal in the United States.
And I think the loophole is you get, you go in to buy a sticker or a tee-shirt, and then you get the product as a, as a gift. It is a gift. You get it as a gift, so therefore you're not, you know, no drug transactions taking place within a thousand...
I didn't know that, but you see Ethan...
Get it to buy a shirt and get, yeah.
And the possession act.
Just one more quick thing, and you may have found it or whatever, Cardon News is a great news organization. They have a great, three or four serious stories on cannabis shops in southwest Virginia. It is honestly very thorough, very good. I mean, you probably, it's not gonna give us any information that we don't know or anything that we can really bite a bit, but it's a, it's a really good read on that industry.
And thank you for your interest, all right? Dennis, which one of y'all taking chair? Come ahead and introduce yourself and talk to us. Remember, we'd like to keep it to three, and if you feel like it's you being undercover, then ask us.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a, I'm a pastor, so three minutes is hard to hold, too.
I appreciate your attitude.
No. My name's Darren Smith, and most of you all know me. I grew up in this town, but I'm, I'm not here to introduce myself as much as I am our church. I'm the pastor, the lead pastor of Ignite Church here in Royal Tree. The most wonderful people you could ever ask for. I have the privilege of pastoring. And I, I listened to the meeting, the last meeting, and I just wanted to make sure, because I know it wasn't intended, but we're not, we're not a church outfit. We're, we're an actual church. We didn't blow in, blow up, and blow out. We're gonna be here until Jesus comes, hopefully. I may not be the pastor at that time, but somebody will be. So we're, we're here in the community, and I just want you guys to know, we're, we're here to serve. We're, we're here to bring our very best. We're a Bible preaching, Bible believing, spirit-filled church that loves God, loves people, and serves with excellence. So every year we do our, our impact day, and, and we're gonna do it with excellence and do the very best we can, and I just want you guys to know, we're here to serve you. So we, we appreciate you and, and what you do to help make this town the best town. I think it's the greatest town ever. I, I thought that all my life. I've lived, I've lived here 21 years. I'm watching, seeing what I can see. I own a house on Sheiky, Sheikyville, Sunset, here for 21 years, and the only reason I moved, I was pastoring, helping lead a church in Withfield for 19 years, and then the Lord called me to plant a church here back here, and I'd already moved to Withfield, so it's still, I'm still traveling, eleven miles. But I just wanted to let you guys know, we're, we're praying for you, and we're here to serve you and thank you. We're praying that you have guidance, and if we can be of service to you, I hope you'll let us know.
And signs of service around the community center look good.
Not bad, is it? Not too bad for a bunch of jack legs.
Yeah, you bet.
I know, I know.
The church itself is absolutely beautiful.
Wrong church.
Wrong church.
Wrong church.
Wrong church?
But I'm sure the one you're talking about is gorgeous.
Yes, it is.
We're, we're, no, you're fine. We, we meet in the high school.
Oh, that's great.
Every, every week. We set up and tear down every week.
It's wonderful. I apologize for the mistake.
That's, that's, maybe you're speaking, you're prophesying a little bit ahead, because we hope to build...
Well, we hope you do.
That's the goal, is that we'll build a church and end the town. We want to be in town.
And this, that part of you, three minutes, this is, we appreciate it.
Well, I'm happy.
Darren, Darren, you're all right. We appreciate you coming.
How many did you, how many did you have, 101?
We had 122 volunteers on Saturday.
Mark and Love was full.
It was, and that was ju, well, that was just there at the community center. We was at all the schools, the high school, elementary school, middle school, the lake. We was a trailer, a trailer park for W. Lady Pankaroo. And the one, the one thing I want you guys to understand, we're not looking for recognition. We, I don't, I won't let anybody give us recognition about that, because I tell our people, we serve without anything in return. We want nothing. We, we are here to be the church. That's what the Bible tells us to do, and that's what we're doing. We're just gonna serve. So I'm, I'm not looking for favor here with the town. I'm, I'm just letting you know who we are, so there's no question who we are.
I'd just like to say, I mean, honestly, I appreciate it greatly. I was around town and everywhere, I ran, I saw these orange shirts, teams just tearing up jackals and doing a great job. And I just appreciate the fact that you guys want to serve, that you want to serve our community, and you recognize that Royal Tree is a special place.
Very, very.
And that, that means a lot to me. And I just, I mean, honestly, thank you.
Thank you for that. Our people, our people are phenomenal. The Dr. Pepper stage looks amazing. You gotta look at it. It's, it's, it's water sealed and ready to go, and there is a bee's nest under part of the stage. You'll need to knock that out. We knocked one out. There was about a thousand bees coming out after our water sealers, but they got them. No, no, bees didn't get them, they got the bees.
You know where this located?
It's under the, it's up under the stage somewhere. They was painting, they was water sealing the front boards, and they could see it's a, they said it's a big one. You'll see. I think for Chris Campbell to get up there and start jamming out, next thing you know, he's doing some flack.
Do you got any volunteers going?
Well, I, I treat bees just like most people in church treat snakes. If there's a bee around, I'm out of here. Don't have them, we'll deal with later.
So bees nest, it's a big one.
It's a big one.
Listen, I, we appreciate you. I apologize again. I've been sort of indisposed for some time now, so I beg forgiveness.
You're fine.
But we appreciate you.
I appreciate, I've, I've known you for many, many years, sir. Your, your wife, your wife is the reason why I made it to school.
Oh, well, that's a good...
Well, well, I was fifth grade anyway.
Okay, so I, I bragged on you in my report. You want me to X through that?
I, I'd rather, yeah, yeah, I'd rather, you know.
I've seen nothing down there that looked jackleggy.
Thank you. They, they did go down last night, or yesterday, and had some lights on top of the sign, and so, so some solar lights, the solar caps in the spots, so it, it shows up at night. I mean, it's, it's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful, so.
I went down there a little while ago, and they're nice, they're placed where they'll shine right on it.
Yes, sir. And well, Brian, Brian Smith, boy, took a picture of it, sent it to me when the lights on, lights were on, and it's, it's, it's nice. And the, the sign on the pavilion, we'll fix, we'll rehang it and fix it Thursday.
On, on, on the, of the...
On the pavilion.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to read.
They're gonna put white, they're gonna put white metal.
We're gonna fix it. We're gonna fix that, so it'll pile.
But it's nicer than no one was up there.
Yeah, and the other three that were hanging below it.
No, well, no skateboarding, no trespassing?
No tr, well, no skate trespassing. Yeah, it was all piled up together there, so.
No skate passing?
I'm really out of time. I gotta go sit down.
Appreciate it. And if you've got something you want to add to it, please come with. And listen, once again, we appreciate all that you do.
Mr. Mayor, Town, Town Council, my name is Dennis Fortner. I live on Chestnut Avenue. The only reason I'm here tonight is I would like an update. I want you to come down to the clock here, please.
Okay.
I know they met yesterday, you were supposed to meet.
Yes, sir.
And that's the only reason I'm here. I'm not here to complain. Yet, yesterday was very quiet, last night was very quiet, and all day today was very quiet, so.
Yeah. What, what Sean did, knocked on wood.
What did Sean did?
He knocked on wood.
But it'll be back. I, you know, I, I expect that. I'm not asking for miracles.
Well, Jason's got a nice...
I met, as you know, I met yesterday.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know, it was, it was a very productive meeting, more productive than I thought it probably would be. I will tell you that there are, they do have, you had, I had actually got some of this information from you, but they've got the kinetics engineer, which is a sound engineer from Virginia Tech, and he went and had done some studies about the problem that they have down there. And he said that, he said that I, for me to report, that they are waiting on the findings of his study, and then from there, they'll see what they can do to remedy the problem. If, I wish this commu, I wish the communication that we had yesterday would have happened a month and a half ago.
Two months, three months ago.
But, you know, it is what it is. Here we are now.
Right.
So I will say that I, I came out of that meeting with the, the plant manager very, I'm not gonna say excited, but I was relieved that he, of how they were acting about working with the town and the citizens to get this resolved. It was, it was, you would have enjoyed the meeting.
Yeah, but you told me that I missed not to hear it.
Well, I talked to you.
I was here talking to him when the guy said he would come and meet, and it was like, I didn't, I personally didn't feel I needed to be here. You know what I mean? But, and I excused myself, and I laughed.
And I appreciate that, but...
That's good. I'm glad to hear that.
But they're waiting on their findings from this engineer. I think it's gonna come pretty quickly, because I think it's been a couple weeks since he was there. But what I've reported tonight is what he asked me to report, because he does, he does have his legal teams, you know, saying, you know, be careful what you say because of, of things. But Dennis, I'll, I'll let you know, you know, I came out of that meeting very optimistic.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. That, that gives me a little bit of relief in my, this is driving me crazy, because you don't have to deal with it like I do.
No, because you, you...
I'm a half mile from that place. And it, it drives me nuts.
Yeah, but, and it's, we want you to know, it's not following on deaf ears what you're asking us.
I know that. And I feel, can I comment a little?
You certainly may. I wish you would.
Me calling WDBJ seven helped this situation.
It might very well have.
I know it did.
Yeah.
And, and the posts I made on Facebook helped as well, because it made more people... Do I need to get up here and speak?
No, you're all right.
It made more people aware that were just numb to it, I guess. They, they hear it or heard it, but they never paid attention to it.
Right.
And it has made more people aware of it. I had a fellow tell me today, as a matter of fact, this morning, and this makes me so angry, because what, what they say in the meeting? You know, if you really want to know what's was said in the meeting, come, be here, take part in it. I'm not your messenger, boy. But anyway, he, he lives on Briarwood, I believe it is.
Over next to the, on the other side of Rattleton?
Yeah. And he hears it when it's on. So that tells you, gives you a pretty good, Monica has heard it at her house. I didn't mean to put you on spot, Monica.
No, it's all right. She is part of the town, too.
I know Alma has told me she heard it. Sean has told me he heard it.
It's for certain that it is there.
Absolutely, it is.
And you all's presence has proven that it's a problem.
Well...
So it is a problem.
I don't think...
Because it violates two, I know, ordinance as the town has, that's been going on since
this started.
I know. I just want to say, I, I'm pretty sure he wouldn't mind if I reported this. They know that there's an issue. Klopner is not disputing that there is a noise issue. So it's not like they're saying this doesn't exist.
Right, I understand.
Well, and I'm just, I mean, honestly, I'm thankful, and I know we're still waiting, and you have to be patient, and it's not easy. I'm thankful that it hasn't gotten to the point of Klopner or us or whoever saying, "You need to talk to our team lawyers and whatnot." We're still sitting at the table, and we're still trying to work this out, and I'm an eternal optimist. I feel like that's the best thing, as long as we keep talking to each other and not lawyers, we're getting there.
We don't want, we don't want any parasites in there, and you can record that.
But like, you know, the whole, the, the whole point of, of the whole thing that I want is, I, I came out of that meeting optimistic.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
If, if I didn't, I would tell you the other way, but I, I did feel optimistic.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if I may, I always want to tell anybody that's good enough to come to speak before the council that you're welcome anytime. You're welcome to stay the rest of the evening with us. You can come and watch the zoo, or if you want to go and watch TV, you, in other words, we're done huffing about this particular thing, and you're welcome, as you can be both able to stay or, however you want to, want to make it welcome as we can.
I'm gonna just, like, I don't have any plans.
That's all right. If you go sleep, go snore, we're gonna get you.
Well, yeah, wake me up.
Okay.
We'll go home and turn on the news and watch the zoo on the news.
Yeah, if you do that, that's what you're gonna get.
Good night, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any correspondence from the town council?
Um, I just have one thing. Put a invitation on your all's tables. I was asked by the Asbury Church to invite everyone to their 200-year celebration on August the 3rd. So they want the council to be aware that they're having that, and they want to invite you all to come and be a part of that.
Okay, have any other correspondence? Have any correspondence from the town council? Okay, that takes us to there.
Thank you, Mayor. I had 22 incidents this month, three wheelbarrows, three disabled vehicles, one disturbance, one citizen, and one arrest, one lawsuit, 1,050 miles patrol, and update on Heritage Day, got one, four policemen there, there'll probably be some more stopping throughout the night.
I expect there's gonna be a pretty good crowd there. I expect you're right.
Yeah.
Well, I need to skip over here, because if we've got a question to ask...
I do have a question, if that, can I interject? How do we find out where the spots are? Because I have a spot down there. How, you know, how do we know where we're supposed to go?
The fire department will direct you. When you show up, find Dave Evans?
On Saturday.
Correct. Saturday morning.
Okay.
That's, that's a good question. See, if you hadn't done that, Dave has signed a fire department sign, or if you won't have any trouble there. I guess, I guess you want to add? Anybody have questions for the policeman? Okay. Then that takes us down another finished business. Now, Eric, I mean, Jason, how do you want to handle it? You want to go over, Mr. Go, you want to?
Downtown revitalization. I know I wasn't here at the last meeting. It's one that I wish I could have been at, because from what I understand, as I expected, Nathan did an excellent job presenting what he had. His knowledge and the stuff that he, that he proposed, I don't have to tell you, because you saw it yourself, but I wish I could have been here for the presentation, really shed some light on what the downtown can really look like, and I, I think it's a really good direction that the council's going in. Right now, the town is currently waiting on the reports from Barrington Landscape Architecture, specifically regarding sediment and erosion control for the site. He wanted to make sure that he got this, that correct. I think he received one proposal that he wasn't real crazy about, and, and is waiting on other proposals. And the contractor is in the process of getting the building permit through the county. I actually talked to Rhonda about the zoning permit for that last week, I think. So we're going, going on with that. Next, on Heritage Day Festival, that's what I was gonna brag on, Darren, but I just Xed it all out, so, but Monica.
Yeah, I've got, I got something I want to report on that. The, I was gonna just report that we've got 23 vendors craft and vendors selling things, and then we have 25 food vendors this year. And that's every, that's, you know, that's people doing ICs and food trucks and everything combined, people doing ice cream, funnel cakes, that's all of those, but that's 25. That's very good, if they all show up. So we've got a really good variety in food.
What's your, what are you selling?
Heritage Day.
You come to Heritage Day?
No, I'm just kidding. I do metalwork.
Oh, okay, now you've got, you've got...
I'm trying, did you go to them? Yes.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I appreciate it.
Would you like one for yourself, cover tonight?
No, I probably wouldn't. I'd be the one before I could do anything with it.
Hey, if I can interject, the mayor has a great piece of metal hardware on his lap.
Already out to the fence, do we? But anyway.
It's gonna be hard to compete with that.
Would you like his power code?
That's a good thing to remember. Yeah, all right. Okay, I apologize for sticking that out there. All right, anything else for deep downtown, okay? I mean, yeah, there's...
No, sir.
All right, what about the Heritage Day, said, we, we, we did we report on that?
Um, we have got the, the checks, the cashier check ready. Basically, we're, we got all the vendors set up. It's, it's always one of those things. Monica and Brenda do a lot of work getting the food together and the lodging and all that, but I'm, but that's going good. Been in touch with them. I think we've met all the needs that they...
Insurance set?
Mm-hmm. I've already, I've got the invoice for that. It's in place.
So, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but I made a decision on that, and I appreciate Monica taking care of it while I was gone. But it's one of those things where you just make it work every year, and we'll just make it work this year.
We've got plenty of, uh, police presence, and ninety-nine percent of the time, all it is is that, is they see. We'll always have our share of drunks, but maybe they won't act again.
We'll retreat.
Couple of beers, I know most of them, that's what bothers me. Okay. Well, upgrades to the sewer plant, you have got any more valves?
We have, uh, there's not any other valves that need to be replaced until tomorrow. I was told that all the valves have been replaced.
They have been replaced, we've still got a small leakage, but it is, but.
Okay.
There's valves and actuators have been replaced.
So, all the valves and actuators have been installed, uh, so I'm gonna set up a C I P cleaning. That's exciting, but I think even more exciting, and this goes into the water accountability down below, is Kevin Belcher from Jobs County. He'll be in town tomorrow morning. He's been looking at our G I S and our infrastructure and how our tanks are, and our water plant, kind of getting a plan together, go over with me.
He'll be available tomorrow morning.
So, uh, I think that he's, he's done it for so many years, and his educational background is in exactly what we're talking about. That I think he's gonna offer us some solutions, or maybe look at what we're doing, and offer us some alternatives that's gonna help us, have some retention on our water and not have such a high accountability. Uh, a lot of that's probably gonna be, um, the way we measure some things, um, which are probably gonna be involved some, uh, leak detectors and things like that. We'll sit down with Mike, and he's gonna bring some other guys from their facility, and talk about our infrastructure and areas where we know that we have some issues, and see what we can do. I've, I've said it in past meetings, uh, this guy's really sharp, you actually met him. They have their, they're much bigger production than we are, but they have their system down to an art form where they know exactly what's going on and, and how. They have what I would love to have for our town, and I think that he can help us implement it. It may cost some money on some software in the future, but it's software that, that needs to be updated anyway, and, um, I think will really help us. But I will have, uh, a meeting with him tomorrow, and I expect to, to come out with some knowledge that I do not have at this point, so. But our water accountability, did you print that down?
Uh, I don't have it, I think we did that, I think we did, it said that, I don't know, no.
Brenda showed it to me the other day, it was, it was in the thirties.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Great.
So it went down.
That's a lot of spending more than a year.
So, we're trending in the right direction, but I'll go back and look, I think when I first got here, it was nineteen. So, still not perfect, but better than it was, so. Our goal was to get back to where it was, it'll never be zero, I promise you. There's never been, there's never been a water system in the history of water systems that it's been zero. But the closer we can get to perfect is what we're, what we're aiming for.
Okay. All right. What about upgrades to the sewer plant?
Upgrades to the sewer plant, um, we still have some issues with the digester, but it's gonna be replacing a, a medical, or a metal, some medical, some metal compartments of the clarifier. Once we got to inspecting some of that, some of it's pretty bad, corroded, uh, and we're gonna have to have it fabricated. Uh, Dave Rutherford, who was our operator, one of our operators down there, he's taken pictures and sent them to a, a fabricator that he has used in the past, and he's gonna give us a quote on that. But it's, it's specifically stuff in the bottom that is, is needed for the clarifier to work correctly. And right now, it, it would probably work correctly if we put it in online, but it might not last a week, and then we're in trouble. And having to go back and start from, from, uh, stage one, so. Kinda on that same situation, uh, I reported a couple of months ago that we did get audited by, I call it V O S H A, it's Virginia's part of V O S H A. And we did get written up for some smaller things. And I reached out to V R S, uh, and, or V M L, and they have a, a, a person who used to work for them that came and met with me today. Uh, and we called V O S H A, their regional director, and went over some things. Speaking with this individual, if they show up for an inspection, he said that he had done inspections for V O S H A in the past, and he had done four hundred, and he said twice he had never written up, never had it, found anything to write up. So, it was inevitable that we were gonna get written up for something. So we made all the, the, uh, the, the changes that, that they required us to make. He's taken documentation, um, we're going to, uh, set up new safety training annually. This individual, he does come down, he goes over, uh, P P E, uh, confined space, uh, trench boxes, that, all the safety stuff that, that we need. He's gonna set up, and he's already set us up a, a safety program that we are gonna present to V O S H A, as part of our abatement for the issues that they did find while they were here. But he did say that they have a, uh, grant application that opens August the first. And he said that a lot of the equipment that we need, they would pay for through their, through their agency, yes, sir. Um, like a, a gas meter, you know, to go down in the hole with somebody. They make them, they make them now with an iPad that you can, you can monitor all the situ, everything that's going on in the hole. So, he said they're here to help, he said ten minutes, their application is filled out and ready to go. And he said that he feels confident that, that they would pay for the majority of the stuff that we need, so. Um, but we do have a trench box. So I spent a lot of, of today dealing with, with V O S H A inspection. Also, I met with, right, I'll go in order, Main Street Sidewalk Repair, can we take that off the agenda now?
Yeah.
I have one question about that.
There's one section that they spent.
Can we go to the property owner of the old town office and see if we can paint or he will paint his portion there? It looks pretty raggedy.
I mean, I can, I don't know why he wouldn't mind us. You're talking about just painting them black, in black?
Yeah, painting the graves that are up there now.
Okay.
It doesn't match the new stuff, it looks pretty raggedy.
Okay. Yes, uh, Monica, then we, I think it's time to, we get to take one off?
Right.
The next one I have, uh, I know that, uh, the contractor was at the community center last week doing some work. Um, he was there again today, I don't know, I didn't get a chance to stop in there, I don't know if he's finished, but I know that they had completed some of the ceiling work in the women's bathroom, um, but I don't know what they got to today.
Changed the door today.
Did they change the door today? So, that work is being, is being completed as well. I think after that, the next stop is gonna be to do the repairs here at the town hall. So, water accountability, talked about, A E P. I met with Mr., Mr. Roberts from A E P on Richfield Street today, uh, to go over, there's two options for a street light there. For Ms. Rich, uh, in that area down there, because it does get dark. Uh, we went over everything and, and kinda looked at the lot. Uh, there's actually two options for street lights that can be completed within two weeks to a month, he said, depending on if they had to dig or if they could just put a pole in and go from there. I think they could probably just put a pole in and go, but, you know, he didn't, he didn't commit to that. Went to, I went and, and knocked on the, the homeowner's door, and, and they weren't there, so I called, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Long, Sherry, and, uh, I'm gonna go speak to, to her and also, uh, the, the neighbor, to make sure of those two options, which one they want. Um, so I'm hoping that in two weeks to a month, that that is taken care of. Uh, was assured by, by Sherry Long that, you know, that that timeline was, was okay with them, um, as long as it got done, but, uh, that, that is in the process of being done. At least I finally got to meet with somebody and talk to them on site, so, so that's where we're at with that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before we get back to unfinished business, uh, we sort of skipped over the derelict property, do we have any kind of report?
Um, no, sir.
Eric, you got anything to tap us up with?
I mean, I will say, and this is not the derelict property, but across the street here, there has been some, some improvement. Uh, there's still some things that need to be moved, um, but it is tidier, it's been weed-eated, and it does look better than what it had. And I will commend, uh, that individual for.
The property owner does it.
Really?
Yeah. Danny and Nelson were there doing the weed eating, that's a shame, because it is their property.
Yeah.
But.
He moved the lawn doors, he's kinda made his car lot and marriage all lined up out there, but he's still got several new ones.
It may be that we have to get sort of tougher on all of this kind of business. We're gonna, we'll hear about it, I sort of, don't want to, I didn't forget, but, you know, that citizen's back in here asking questions, so. Maybe a good time to push and shove a little bit, and some, uh, lots around, I don't know whether Derek's made it a price or. Everybody knows that I'm not traveling around town very much, but anyway, don't, don't forget to look at Unmo.
The only lots that I know of are on Route Eleven, near Troy.
That's not Troy's name.
Troy's, that choice means, there's.
I think it's been done, hey? The front part has, the yard behind the bushes has been done.
Yeah, they just said, we had some on par, and they've been done.
There's nobody living there now, is there?
What about Jack Singleton's property?
He comes, he usually comes in there and weed eats it.
He hadn't been there this year.
I, I haven't, I haven't looked.
He's been there, he parks around in the back, comes through that, that side road off the.
Of course, he don't have nothing there to mow, but it's right there where the car is. He usually, he usually weed eats it.
Yeah, he did.
There's one on Briarwood that's vacant, that.
We took care of that, I think that's been done.
Mayor, I have a question about downtown revitalization.
Okay.
Councils before this one, a couple of times, have talked about the wall of honor thing. Would it be possible maybe to incorporate that somewhere?
In the downtown revitalization?
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's where we want it to go.
It's been talking about for twenty years.
Well, we do have, we do have the pavers, the bricks.
There's not enough to do, your brick work you were talking about, isn't mine, is not enough for that?
We could.
But they were ordered, and they say walk of honor.
So they need to go on the, okay.
On the sidewalk.
I was talking about the brick that we sent off each from the, I was just wondering, you know, you were talking to me about Jeremy Miller and his, you know.
Those bricks were gonna be used, they've talked about doing all kinds of things with those bricks, I mean, we do need to do that for mitigation. But nobody's said exactly where they're gonna be used, I mean, they do, they have to be used somewhere, though, so. But no, the depot, um, friends ordered our pave, ordered these pavers, and they say walk of honor. So I feel like they're gonna have to be put on a sidewalk.
Well, now, can that be, but what he's talking about on that today?
I'm thinking that sidewalk, we talked about going from the building on the sidewalk, going that, the engineer showed, just going through the middle of the park, just making, putting the bricks on there. Would that work?
We're talking about, we're talking about the abatement for the, the brick, and we can use it for anything, I mean, my, my idea would be make a base for the flat pole using that brick. You know, it's a, it's a rustic-looking brick, and, I mean.
Yeah.
And make some, some spice for future.
Yes, I mean.
And you can use the word walk.
We have them, already have them.
It came to me after last weekend, at the last meeting.
We did talk about that with him, but nothing was set in stone with that, so.
Be creative, and let's do that. Because, you know, it's, we've all been getting involved in it a lot of times, and this happens.
If I could, one more thing on that, I could have told you for the town, whatever, um, I know we mentioned it before, but we've got everything in place, we're just talking about us doing the grant application, we have planned, it's much better. We have that written yet?
It has not.
At Evans' office first?
It has not opened, it has not opened yet. We have basically it written, um.
That's what I think.
But I'm just gonna say we're not inventing the wheel on this, so we were able.
Just wanna make sure.
We were able to get a passed grant application, and.
Are you talking about the possibility of doing?
Funding.
Funding.
Or at least, maybe not, what if, I mean, you know, like, we trade some of the costs, please.
Some of the, some of the costs.
So that would be a good thing. Okay, I was just wondering, I didn't know when the deadline was, but I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, we're, we're gunning for that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other unfinished business? Okay, we have new business, can I have your hand card? We've got a lot of things going on.
Did you talk to that guy that you mentioned to me?
Has he, has he came back, right, you got him?
For what?
The painting guy?
He was supposed to start it today, he said weather permitting, he would be here today.
The booth guy, right?
Yes, sir.
Progress.
The weather was nice.
Yeah. Supposed to be nice tomorrow.
But I did, I, he wanted the, uh, he wanted the abatement, he wanted to see where we had got the, the abatement on it. But did you explain to them, Derek was able to find these people, um, this guy paints, and, and he, he started a fellowship in Speedwell. I think it, well, his email is Lineheart, I don't know if that's the name of it or not. But it's a, it's a man's ministry, and, and a lot of them are in the painting profession, it's in some form or fashion. And I reached out to him, and I talked to him, and, and he said that he would make it look really good, he, he said he's really excited to do this. It's something that, that, you know, he's, he's gonna take pride in, and he actually emailed me yesterday and said, like I just said, with weather pending, I would like to start on it tomorrow, so, there's gonna be. They're gonna spray the bottom part, the black will be sprayed, and he said a lot of the caboose will be sprayed as well. But he said, you know, the chains and all that, there is why it'd be.
Are they gonna leave N W and the numbers on it? No, when we got that, in the agreement, when they gave it to us, we were to take those off. I mean, that just, that was in the agreement.
Is there a copy of that agreement in existence?
I don't know, Eric. It's Monica, and, and they're gonna have to be bored before they go digging through that.
Don't tell Brenda she'll dig.
We don't even know one year.
Yeah, I thought Brenda, she'll work on it all week.
You can do that, take it with you down the river. Don't sit down there listening to the river. It should be on there, I think, but I'm just saying, that was in it.
If they get us, we can pay them.
It's not the first one. Tell someone.
Okay, that's forgiveness.
Yeah, that's true. Under committed reports, you have anything to bring for Monica?
I do. So Chief Breedlove, um, well, the county is in the process of changing their, um, records management system, their software. And we're gonna use the same software they are, which is Southern Software's R M S system that we had when the chief first came here. So they're going back to that system. Um, we had, we didn't know what amount to budget for that, so I need, I just need to ask you all to do a budget amendment tonight. ask you all to do a budget amendment tonight. Um, the cost for Royal Retreat's gonna be seven thousand four hundred and three dollars. And if you all could just move some money from the general funds undesignated account um, to the chief's computer maintenance account in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and three dollars. We'll do a P O and get this going.
Is this a one thousand?
Yes. So it's actually broke down, it's four thousand nine hundred and three dollars for installation and training, and they'll do that on site. And then twenty-five hundred dollars a year for maintenance.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, the maintenance is twenty-five hundred.
We got a motion on the floor here.
One second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Everybody understand, Monica, you have formed the motion.
Okay.
For us.
I gotta catch up. Okay, I'm good.
Hey, hey, okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, very good, thank you. Southern Software was the original people that we dealt with when I went to a computer.
And that's who our software is. That's who the campus.
That was your, your.
Very familiar, very familiar with Southern Software.
He wants it, he wants Southern Software.
Well, when, when I first started here, like I, we had Southern Software, the county had something different than Whipple. So the county went to countywide, where everybody could share information, look at each other's stuff, so. And then this is gonna be the CAD system too, what dispatch uses, they're switching.
So maybe we'll speak to that, it's the same.
And, and when I came first come here, and when I worked at Smith County, we had Southern, so it'd be pretty easy for me to catch on to you, so.
Okay, very good. All right. Under personnel offices and legal matters, you have anything to add there?
Um, you wanna talk about it?
We uh, that, we set up some initial interviews, Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Last Wednesday, we interviewed seven in one evening, which was a mistake. Um, but from those seven, the seven, we decided to interview seven out of thirty-ish. Thirty-ish applicants. Uh, this is, this has been, the secretary clerk position has been the most sought-after position I've ever, and most competitive position that, that we've had to hire since I've been here. Um, we narrowed it down to three. Uh, we had uh, interviews with those three last night. Uh, we completed the first in, first and second interview. And the third person to be interviewed did not show up. Um, so, you know, from, from interviewing her the first time, you know, we knew that she was interested in the job and that she was a strong candidate for the job. Well, Monica went and checked her messages, she was in an accident on I-1 last night and broke her back.
Oh.
No, no.
Well, are you gonna give a little time or are you gonna have to take her off?
She's out eight weeks, we can't afford, can't afford.
Okay. That's a shame.
Um, but I, but with that being said, our other two applicants are strong. It's not like, I'm, I'm not trying to belittle anybody, but you know, it was, it was gonna be neck and neck anyway with all three of them. Um, but I just hated that, that the situation arose that it did, because uh, if it was this person, they were gonna be a tremendous asset to the town, but.
Well, is eight weeks really too long?
Well, Debbie won't be here after this, into this.
Debbie's done after July.
And we have two very strong candidates. And we have.
It's not like you're gonna hurt.
Right. I mean, we would have, any of the three that we interviewed la- last, last night, was it last night?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Any of the three that we interviewed last night would be very qualified for the job.
So.
Are they local?
Mm-hmm.
But uh.
Well, county, not retreat, but in the county.
Well, I don't have to be in town, we make that determination sometimes.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll be making the decision and, and reaching out to those individuals we'd like. It'll probably be done by the end of the week, so.
Okay, see anything else to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay, that takes us to the town manager's report.
Really, the only thing that I haven't reported on, that I can think of, is we did hold a planning commission meeting um, last Monday. Uh, it was basically a procedural meeting. Um, uh, Mr. Brawley was named the chair. Uh, and um, it was quick meeting. Uh, there were some questions about, about, you know, how we were gonna go forward with, with some of the condition, we used permits and things like that, but uh, we hadn't met in quite a while, so it's good to, to have that meeting. Basically, we have three new, new members um, that asked a lot of good questions, so I think we've got a pretty strong planning commission right now.
To reiterate what uh, Monica Lewis has said, maybe use him a little more. Uh, I know that nobody wants to spend the whole good time of their evenings, but it's, it's a good idea. I'd like, I'd like to undermine that if I may.
Well, just so everybody knows, um, the current members are Becky Harrison, Roger Hedrick, uh, Mr. Brawley, Sean is the council liaison, uh, Chad Trivett.
Sherry.
Sherry Long.
Is everybody up to date?
Yes.
Everybody's current?
Yes.
So with that said, we, sounds to me like they're pretty strong, they've got a lot of experience, all that much, yes?
They uh.
Unless, just use that some.
They're, they're not, they're not afraid to.
Oh, no. And that, that's what we want. I, I know of a councilman that was chosen because we didn't, didn't need someone to answer. He wanted the yes ma'am, and we know that. So anyway, with that said, you guys have anything to report?
Unless you guys have any questions.
I heard anything from our friends at the wing group.
We'll be getting into that later in the meeting.
Okay, Monica, you ready?
We have a pretty long run of bills tonight. We wrote these checks. AZ Office Resource, a hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Alpha and Omega Repair Service, two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents. Amazon, thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Atmos Energy, a hundred and twenty-one dollars. Austin Hennington, a thousand five hundred dollars. Barrington Landscape Architecture, three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Bright Speed, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. C and D Truck and Safety Supply, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and five cents. Centos, eight hundred and two dollars. Custom Air, eight thousand three hundred dollars. Dee's Custom Metals, six hundred dollars. David Anderson, four hundred and fifty dollars. Electronic Systems, thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Flow Control, a thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. Food Country, twenty dollars and fifteen cents. Fort Shizzle Septic, three thousand one hundred dollars. Front Row Music, four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Glenn Shelton, two thousand dollars. Hurtin' Prophet, six hundred dollars. Judy Farlow, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. K, K A R Construction, five hundred dollars. Casey Property Management, a hundred and sixty dollars. Lincoln Financial Group, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Lowenstein Construction, four thousand sixty-nine dollars and ten cents. Meredith's Garage, twenty dollars. Michael Shotband, a thousand dollars. Mike Guffey, three thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Of the Day, three hundred dollars. Ortech Incorporated, five thousand five hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. Penn Stewart, a thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Royal Tree Volunteer Fire Department, one hundred dollars. Sayers Electric, a thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Shintel, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. Smart Design Contracting and Consulting, seven hundred and forty dollars. Southwest Crane, six hundred dollars. The Bank of Marion, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and seven cents. The Riches, three hundred dollars. USA Blue Book, six hundred and two dollars and sixty-two cents. Virginia Department of Health, three thousand sixty-three dollars. And Virginia Municipal League, a thousand one hundred and seven dollars. That's a total of fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and ten cents. Anybody have questions on any of those?
Custom Mary Town Shop?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And the Lowenstein's is the town shop as well?
Okay, while we're passing this about to be signed, does anybody have any questions or concerns that need to be brought forward at this time? I think we do very well, considering the different people who are involved in this. Shoot, anybody? Does that sound? Okay. Well, you can answer up as you go. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to convene to a closed session. All right. We, uh, that's, you know, Monica, we never did do this right there. I think we both, I think we're going into a closed session. We must've got a motion and a second.
Right.
So all those in favor, ready for further discussion? We'll do that in a minute. Those in favor, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, this is for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of public to held real property. For discussion in an open meeting would be adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating our strategy of the public body. With that said, appreciate you all the time.
Get out.
Thanks again for, you all.